To transfer the Frontier Communications franchise to Northwest Fiber LLC and authorize the city manager and his designee to continue negotiating the transfer request. So, let me do that one more time. So, the motion is I move to extend time to review FCC Form Number 394 to December 31st, 2019 relating to the request to transfer the Frontier Communications transfer, uh, transfer of the Frontier Communications franchise to Northwest Fiber LLC and to authorize the city manager and his designee to continue negotiating the transfer request. So, the chair will entertain that motion.
So, moved, I'll second.
Moved and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not, a clerk please take the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Ducey?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Struckett?
Yes.
Mayor Raynor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurdick?
Yes.
Yes.
So, we'll call the regular meeting to order, and if the clerk will please take the roll call.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Struckett?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hurdick?
Here.
Mayor Raynor?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
President.
Here.
If you will please stand and join me in the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands its formation and under government, and to the citizens, and to deliver duty and justice as well. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, but we would like to pull, um, Item C on the business agenda, the, uh, the bond measure, to give staff a little more time to, uh, to go over it. So, uh...
Move it to next week.
Yeah, and move it to next week. So, then I will ask for the approval of the agenda as modified. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as modified, and that is Item Number C on the business agenda removed till next week. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation. And, uh, whereas the Snow King Watershed Council is an all-volunteer regional nonprofit organization started in 2011 and based in Kenmore. And whereas the Snow King Watershed Council works to protect local creeks and natural areas through citizen action and education, and whereas the Snow King Watershed Council has worked since its inception to benefit the Kenmore environment, including activities such as the restoration of the shoreline in Squire's Landing Park in partnership with Adopt a Stream Foundation and the city of Kenmore. As part of this project, over $80,000 in grant money was raised, two acres and over 1,000 feet of shoreline was restored, and nearly 7,500 plants and trees were planted. And whereas, community members from the Kenmore Waterfront Activity Center, Skyview Middle School, Inglemore High School, North Creek High School, U-Dub Bothel, the Girl Scout Troop 45054 contributed hundreds of volunteer hours to the project, and will increase shading of the water and improve salmon habitat. And whereas, the Swamp Creek Watershed Forum, held in partnership with the city of Kenmore, included over 60 stream-side landowners participating and learning about actions they can take to protect Swamp Creek. And whereas, the Snow King Watershed Council raised over $200,000 to create rain gardens to reduce flooding and improve habitat along Swamp Creek. The funding came from action taken against illegal construction activity and from King County Councilmember Rod Dembowski and the Waterworks Grant Program. This project resulted in over 20 rain gardens constructed by partner organization Farmer Frog. And whereas, another project was the development of a community-based volunteer water monitoring program, which included volunteers in the Snow King Water Watchers Program who monitor conditions affecting salmon habitat and human health and take action to protect local creeks from illegal construction runoff. These monitors are active throughout King and Snohomish Counties. And whereas, over 90 volunteers are currently certified water monitors, and these monitors contribute over 700 hours per year. And whereas, in Kenmore, volunteers monitor monthly at two sites on Little Swamp Creek, two sites on Swamp Creek, and two sites on Settah-Tai Creek. These volunteers work 120 hours a year monitoring local creeks. Now therefore, I, David Baker, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the Kenmore City Council, do hereby want to recognize the efforts of the Snow Creek Watershed Council for their invaluable work in the city of Kenmore. And so, Mr. Admin, you are going to accept this proclamation for the Snow King Watershed Council. Next item on the agenda is comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes, and the timer will appear on the screen behind us. And will the clerk please call the first person?
David Peterson?
Hello, my name is David Peterson. I live at 7301 Northeast 175th Street, Unit 142 in Kenmore. That happens to be the Inglewood East Shores Mobile Home Community, and my residence is the closest residence in that park to the dock at Squire's Landing. It's approximately 50 yards away, and I can carry on a conversation with the people there. I sit on my deck 20 to 25 hours a week, because I'm retired, and observe the wildlife. I take photos to share, and my motivation is conservation through awareness. If you're on Kenmore Neighbors, you've seen my bird pictures. I am all in favor of the expansion of the Kenmore Water Activity Center, also known as KAWAC, except for one small portion of the design. I handed out a map, I hope you have it there. It's got a circled area that says A, C, and B, and the specific area that I'm concerned with is the bridge and boardwalk that crosses over Swamp Creek. There's a viewing platform at A and B, and there is an alcove at C, and I'll talk about those in a second. The Samamish River has turned into a superhighway for birds and wildlife due to the expansion development by people. There are few untouched areas for our wildlife, and the Samamish River is one of those areas. Every member of the council has mentioned environmental stewardship in their campaign platforms, including mention of our herons, eagles, and salmon. The presentation you just gave where you recognized someone vouches for that fact. Environmental stewardship should be concerned with all the wildlife, to include all other bird species, also the river otters, beaver, mink, muskrats, raccoon, coyotes, and black-tailed deer. I photographed all of those right there on the river. A bridge over Swamp Creek is literally a bridge going to nowhere. By adding the bridge and boardwalk, it does nothing to add to the park visit experience that the dock at Squire's Landing Park already provides. You can't see any more of the river from those two viewing areas than you can from the dock. By putting in that bridge and boardwalk, it will have a large impact on the birds and the wildlife. That area is critical for nesting and raising next generations of waterfowl and the critters. When the bridge makes the area accessible to people, it will also make that area accessible to vagrants. Due to ever-increasing housing cost, it is only a question of when, not if. An encampment will bring noise, cooking fires, trash, and human bodily waste. If you look on your map at the area C, that's an alcove that juts in right there, it's a shallow area, and that is a favorite spot for the ducks and the geese to do their daily bathing and preening. Now, when ducks and geese get done preening, they defecate. They defecate all day long, and they don't do it where, the waterfowl do not follow the water. They get out of the water and they do it on land. That boardwalk will be the perfect repository for lots and lots of duck poo and goose poo. Anyone crossing the bridge will end up on the boardwalk that is covered with that kind of, uh, problem.
Mr. Peterson, your time is up, we're at three minutes.
Okay.
If you can wrap it up.
Pardon?
If you can, in a few words, wrap it up.
I can wrap up. The solution is to leave that area alone. That allows those wildlife to grow, you won't have a vagrant problem, you won't have a park maintenance problem, because there will be so much duck poo there, it'll have to be pressure washed about three times a month. And it'll save money that can be used for overrides, and it will also allow those animals for future generations, so our future generations can also see it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. My wife is a huge fan of yours and your photographs, so, uh, next person, please.
Phyllis Finley?
Good evening, Phyllis Finley, Kenmore. My topic is on the task force. I'm here to voice my exceptionally strong support for the city council themselves to solve the budget situation into which they have led us, without the intervention of a task force. I object to city staff themselves or a task force being recognized as financial experts or authority. I object to my elected council members being rubber stamps for staff recommendations without public input. I believe that city council members themselves should have meaningful conversations with citizens. Surely you can structure a way, or multiple ways, for that to happen. Remember when you were promoting walkways and waterways before the vote? Remember how engaged you were with the public? How about trying that approach with the budget? The irony is not lost that a process that is meant to advise and assist with public engagement will be held in meetings in which the public can have no input. Then that information will be passed on to the city manager, and then it will be passed on to the council. I recommend that the council themselves be directly involved with intense and extended public engagement. The task force is a way for the council to dodge or maybe dilute its responsibility, the very thing you were elected to do, by assigning a complex task to a group of individuals with no required experience. Mayor Baker and Councilmember Curtis have years of city budget experience. Councilmember Srebnik has been involved with the Planning Commission and the Comprehensive Plan for years. I suggest that you three take the lead with the other council members in formulating solutions to the budget issue. This is what you were elected to do. Isn't it the primary job of city council to be fiscally responsible with the management of the dollars that we give you? Our budget situation should not be a surprise to anyone. It's no surprise and not a recent occurrence that the city has an inadequate sales tax revenue to support the spending that you choose. Where is that revenue going to be made up, if not in more property taxes and other taxes? So, let's equally focus on spending, not just revenue. Here's one example. The St. Ed Development has doubled to $5 million. The city manager has been emphatic that all projects come in at 50% more than projected. So, let's make St. Ed $7.5 million. We don't have the money. The citizens in your survey made it clear that this is not a priority, and yet the project marches on. Does it take a task force to share with you that citizens don't want to pay more taxes to support projects like this? Here's another example, the Swamp Creek Bridge to Nowhere for No Reason that you just heard about. Please take on and own this complex budget task yourselves, and begin by changing your mindset to one of limiting spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Finley.
Tracy Bonisinski? I'm sorry. My name is Tracy Bonisinski, and my address is 5863 Northeast 197th Street in Kenmore. And I am here today to extend an invitation to the council, and I'm going to begin with a story first. When I first moved from the East Coast to the Pacific Northwest in 2001, I was delighted by the Himalayan blackberry. I loved that they were everywhere, up the alley from my apartment, in parks, alongside the road, behind warehouses that didn't mind if you parked your car and picked for an afternoon. For years, I picked as many Himalayan blackberries as I could and froze them so they'd last throughout the winter. Slowly over the years, however, I began to understand that they aren't such a wonderful part of the Pacific Northwest ecosystem. And here's what King County says about them on their website. Himalayan blackberry outcompetes native understory vegetation and prevents the establishment of native trees that require sun for germination, such as Pacific madrone, Douglas fir, and western white pine. Dense, impenetrable blackberry thickets can block access to larger, of larger wildlife to water and other resources, not to mention causing problems for people trying to enjoy parks and natural areas. Himalayan blackberry is abundant along rivers and wetland edges in King County, often blocking access to these areas. Riverside covered with blackberry often indicate degraded conditions and may mask eroding banks. My seven-year-old and I now call them the dreaded Himalayans. They are incredibly aggressive and difficult to control. My mom and I have been battling them on our property since we moved to Kenmore three years ago, but I am persistent, and I believe that there are many others in our community who feel just as determined and persistent as I do about making space for our native ecosystem to thrive. And that is why, with Melio Kane and Linda Phillips, Kenmore residents, I'm organizing a Day After Thanksgiving Volunteer Habitat Restoration Event at Wallace Swamp Creek Park. We're going to spend the morning pulling Himalayan blackberry, and we hope that it will be the beginning of taking back the park for native habitat. So, I am here to invite all of you to join us. I hope you have a wonderful and warm Thanksgiving with family and friends, and that you'll bring those family and friends with you to Wallace Swamp Creek Park the next day to pull some of those dreaded Himalayans. So, thank you so much for your time and attention, and I'm going to follow up with each of you individually with a personal invitation, so I really want to see you there. And thank you so much for providing the time to make these comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Von Shusky.
Hello, I'm Vicki Grayland, I live in Kenmore. I have a couple of things I want to say today. First, this is, November is Indigenous Peoples' Month, and I would like to invite you to join me in honoring and thanking Indigenous people for their stewardship of these lands for so many generations, and to acknowledge we are on traditional Coast Salish land. I'd like to say that I totally support what Phyllis Finley said. As a former journalist, I'm kind of horrified that you would have, uh, public hearings without public comment. I believe in free speech, I believe in the First Amendment. I agree that you shouldn't have this task force, but if you do have it, there should be public comment. And, um, I've been bothered for a long time, I would like to speak about Item 13 on your agenda. I've been bothered a long time about what you're spraying into the Samamish River. I'm glad you're reviewing it. I urge the city to move to non-toxic methods of controlling the non-native weeds in the Samamish River and Lake Washington. We've been using glyphosate, commercially known as Roundup. Roundup is a well-known carcinogen. Another chemical used, Diquat, was one of the chemicals dumped on Vietnam by the United States military during the Vietnam War, which makes me wonder, are we at war with the Samamish River? Your report states Diquat has to be applied when salmon are least likely to be present in the treatment area. Doesn't that give you a clue that it's a bad chemical? Where does it go? Does it go into the sediment where the reproduction is done for the salmon? Where does it go? Does it go into Puget Sound? Is that why, one of the many reasons why the orca are having such a hard time right now with their own reproduction? Diquat is a non-selected herbicide, and is also, your report states, Diquat is a non-selective herbicide and is also effective at treating many other weeds. So, I interpret that to mean that Diquat is really good at killing and does not discriminate. That means it's also good at killing native plants that we want there. My ask is this, the city of Seattle stopped using Roundup earlier this year because it's so toxic. Perhaps our staff could contact Seattle and find out what they're using instead. But better yet, why not buy some waders and weed clippers? Why not just cut these weeds? Climate change is going to present us with lots of non-native plants and bugs, and we need to think of non-toxic ways to deal with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grayland.
John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. You're going to vote on a charter tonight to form a task force and outline the powers of the task force, and I think it's a continuation of the same kind of financial exploitation that we've had in this city since we started back in 90, 97, 98. The city claims to be victimized by not enough revenue. There's no focus on cost analysis. In order to do budgeting properly, under a city manager foreign and government, under state law, RCW 35A 13.090, city council is responsible for assigning powers and duties. So, each person, you're responsible for what they do. So, if the city clerk wants to cut people off, which I think is rude, that's, that's really the mayor's job when they're speaking here. That's your job, that's their power and their duties. So, you know, you should be clear on that, and you should stop that practice. The city, the task force has, the city is required to be recognized as the financial expert. City has a conflict of interest here. More money, more people you hire, the more wealthy everybody gets, the closer, the better job security you get, the sooner you get closer to retiring before you're 55, making $75,000 a year like Dave Maron. Okay? And there's no citizen comments. What a surprise. You guys don't want, you want to do this process and you don't want to let people speak. So, this, this is history repeating itself, and I'll give you an example. When I was on the council from 2004 to 2008, we had to build a city hall. So, at our first retreat, I asked the city to give us a plan for how big of a city hall should we build based on what we can afford. Okay? I didn't know, but they had a planning commission after we incorporated that did the comp plan and the appendix. They had a plan for a 20,000-square-foot city hall for 40 people, even though our financial plan said we could only afford about 13 people, and everyone else had to be contract employees. Right? City never told us about that plan. I read the comp plan, I read the feasibility study, I read all kinds of stuff, I missed that. So, I got three votes. I brought it back in June, we did our budget in June of '04. I got, I got a majority vote to do a plan. By the end of the year, city didn't give us a plan, and they didn't tell us they already had a plan. Okay? And so, in January of '05 retreat, I asked for it again, I got the votes. In May of '05, the city gave us a sketchy thing that said, "We really can't tell you because we don't know what you're going to ask for." That's how task forces work, and that's how council members are kept in the dark. So, financial exploitation, these task forces are really bad news, being manipulated, and not serving the public interest.
If I can get you to wrap up, Mr. Hendrickson, please.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I was kind of happy about the election, because I don't, we don't have the church group here as much anymore, only Milt is left, and I hope that you people will reconsider voting for Dave Baker for mayor. I never voted for him for mayor. You can never trust him. He's now a Democrat now, right? Is he a Democrat? After all the Republican stuff, he was. He knew you guys were taking over, so now he's a Democrat, so he can stay mayor. I'm wrapped up.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson.
Mayor, there's nobody else signed up.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Thank you for your comments, Mr. Peterson. Thank you for your comments on the bridge, and it's something I'm sure that we will, we will be discussing and taking into consideration. Ms. Finley, certainly thank you for your comments. I know that the council has asked for a financial stability or sustainability report, and I've got a feeling that's what this, uh, committee is going to be helping to come up with, is some sort of financial sustainability that we can use. And it is advisory, it's certainly nothing that's going to be rubber stamped. Ms. Von Shusky, thank you very much for your efforts for our environment and try to help control the blackberries, we certainly appreciate that. Ms. Grayland, thank you for your comments on, on the First People, the Native Americans here. For your information, Saturday, this Saturday at between 1:00 and 3:00, we're start, we have a new art show opening on the Coast Sahelish Peoples' Art, and there will be a very nice display, there will be activities here and everything. I hope you can join us, thank you for that. Mr. Hendrickson, thank you very much for your comments on the task force, and, uh, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So, moved.
And I'll second. If there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a, do we, are we going to do the public hearing though, right? Great. So, the next item on the agenda is proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized tax-supported estimated expenses for the year 2020.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Trying to get the presentation to open. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Kelly. So, tonight, yes, we're going to hold the public hearing for the purpose of setting the 2020 property tax levy, particularly to present and review the regular levy, and also to illustrate setting the excess tax levy to pay for the walkways and waterways bonds. So, I have a fairly short presentation, which I'll provide, and then, uh, take questions or comments, or you can open to the public hearing at that time and take comments. After tonight's public hearing and discussion of the levies, next week, November 18th, there will be a presentation on the proposed budget amendments that are resulting from the mid-biennial review, which we are required to do this year. And if all proceeds is planned, the following week, November 25th, we will have a public hearing on those proposed budget amendments, followed by adoption of, um, the amendments, if there are no changes, after November 18th. And it's also, will be at that meeting that you'll be asked to adopt the 2020 tax levies. As you know, December 2nd is the date that the King County Assessor requires the tax levy ordinances in order to prepare the tax statements. So, each year, the council must set the tax levy and decide whether or not there will be an increase to the levy over and above the effect of new construction going on the tax rolls. And this chart kind of illustrates that process. The increase is limited each year by the lower of 1% or the implicit price deflator, which is also known as the IPD, it's a Personal Consumption Expenditure Index. And generally, the IPD is higher than 1%. With inflationary pressures somewhat less this year than last, the IPD for determining this year's allowable increase is 1.396. Last year it was over 2%. But both of those exceeded the 1%, so 1% is our limiter in this case. So, in this new tax year, and consistent with the adopted balanced budget, and in order to meet the anticipated expenditures for the remainder of 2019 and 2020, a 3% increase to the levy is recommended using... a three percent increase to the levy is recommended using bank capacity that resulted from the years when no levy increase was taken. The most recent value of bank capacity after the two thousand nineteen increase, which included three percent per King County, is $499,000 remaining. And they informed me that after a three percent levy increase for 2020, should that be adopted, the bank capacity would be about $400,000. So to set the levy, you begin with the calculation of last, from the, from the calculation of last year's levy of $5,530,000, you add the percent increase being requested, either one percent or three, and add to this result the new construction value, which this year is $99,000. For a total 2020 levy projected at $5,202,875 if you take a one percent increase, or $5,303,935 if you take a three percent increase. So on this slide, I'll just walk through the calculation of the levy and the levy rate using an increase of three percent, which would result in that total levy of $5,300,000. So you start again, as I mentioned, with a two thousand nineteen levy of $5,530,000. You add three percent, which has a value of $151,591, or $151,000. You add new construction of $99,313,000. That's, that's a pretty big number. I just wanted to point that out. So the new construction this year is the highest we've, we've had in our history, just on, you know, dollars. So I thought that was pretty significant. It was in the sixties, sixty million last year, but ninety-five million is a record. So the city's preliminary assessed value increased nine and a half percent also for 2020, which was a pretty significant increase in value. So we're at an all-time high assessed valuation of $5.3 billion. So the tax rate, which results from the higher AV, is expected again to decline to about a dollar per thousand dollars of assessed value from one oh-four last year. So the rate would go down about four cents per thousand, even with a three percent increase. And the three percent levy action would add $101,000 to the city's revenue picture for 2020. If you step through that same calculation sequence with a one percent levy increase, the levy would be $5,202,000, which, as I just noted, would be $101,000 less than a three percent increase in the levy using the same assessed valuation. The levy calculation divided by the assessed value determines the tax rate. So with a one percent increase, the rate would be about ninety-eight cents for a thousand dollars of assessed valuation, which again is a decline from two thousand nineteen. On this chart, I'd like to just show the impact of the levy increase on two different homeowner scenarios. So if you assume that a $600,000 home in two thousand nineteen, just using nice, easy round numbers, is taxed at a levy rate of a dollar four, the tax liability would have been $624,000. Again, that's just a portion of property tax that pertains to Kenmore. If you assume in 2020 that there is no change in the value of that home and it's still $600,000, at a levy rate of ninety-eight cents per thousand, the tax would be $588,000, which is less than 2019. Even at a tax rate of a dollar, using the three percent levy increase, the tax is $600, which is still less than 2019. Although the home value staying the same is probably not a realistic scenario, so this next example uses an increase in assessed value of nine and a half percent on that home. Nine and a half percent again is close to the increase in the overall AV that resulted in Kenmore this year. So that home would have a now, a value of $657,000, and taxed at a rate of ninety-eight cents, the levy would be about $644,000. So an increase of $20 a year over 2019. And at the higher three percent levy rate of a dollar, the tax would be 657, or about $33 more for the year. Of course, every property will experience a different change in value, so the tax impacts are unique to every property owner. On this chart, you can see rela, the relatively small portion of the annual total tax bill that a homeowner, typical owner, might receive, and the very small portion that comes to the city of Kenmore. Kenmore's share of that total tax bill is now under ten percent, which seems to, it gets, seems to be smaller and, a smaller and smaller proportion every year, because there are in total twelve taxing districts that affect taxpayers in the city. And I use two thousand nineteen as an example because we don't yet know what the tax rates are for any of the other jurisdictions. But assuming a home valued at $600,000, the tax bill would have been $6,462, of which $624 would accrue to Kenmore for operating purposes, and $150 would accrue to pay the bond levy. This is a, these are just some historical charts where you can see how the, the effect of the assessed value corresponds to the effect on the tax rate. So as assessed valuation increases in the city, the tax rate drops. And during the recession, when the assessed valuations dropped, the tax rate rose a bit. And then when we came out of the recession, the assessed valuation across the city continued to rise pretty dramatically, and the tax rate has declined accordingly. And that's illustrated even in more detail in the chart on the upper right. The chart in the lower left is the levy over time, and you can see how the levy has, has grown. And new construction is illustrated on the lower right, and you can see that 2020 is estimated to be our, a peak year. The other additional levy that is to be set by the council for 2020 is a levy to collect revenues needed to pay back the debt on the walkways and waterways bonds that were approved in 2016, and the debt that is expected on the next batch of bonds to be issued. So the, the first sale of bonds in 2016 yielded about $9.8 million, and as of the end of this year, $6,495,000 will still be outstanding, and the city's payment will be $529,650. The second series of bonds, which are expected to be issued soon, will yield about $10 million and require debt service payment of about $590,000. So in order to meet those debt service requirements in 2020, the levy needs to raise 21 cents per thousand dollars of AV. So that debt service is $1.1 million divided by the assessed value, 21 cents. And this again is a drop from the tax levy last year, which for the bonds was about 25 cents per thousand. So again, this concludes the presentation for the public hearing portion on setting the 2020 property tax levy. Just again, a reminder that next week, we will review the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty budget amendments, and then on the twenty-fifth, we will have a public hearing on those budget amendments, hoping to adopt those the same night if there are no changes, as well as adopt the 2020 property tax levy and the 2020 excess property tax levy for the bonds. And so that concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions and before or after the public hearing.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor.
Joanne, when can we expect to see the budget amendments? We have a meeting in six days and...
I expect that we can post those to the agenda tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Curtis? No, nothing? Okay, Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to add, I appreciate, thanks for having the comparison with the no change in the House appraised value versus the appreciated value. Then also, one thing I saw was the, you said it was a record at the new construction revenues at the 99,000. Do you know what the projecting, projection was in the budget at all for that?
Not nearly that amount.
So was that even, that was close to it, I would assume, or somewhere in that ballpark?
The 99,000 kind of came as a surprise to me.
Okay.
Because I was looking at last year's new construction and anticipate a much lower level.
Okay.
So this adds more to the budget than I, than had in, had been anticipated. I don't remember exactly what I budgeted, but it was probably no more than 50,000.
Okay, that's what I, I thought it was somewhere in that range, so that's great. Good news.
If I could just add one thing. Joanne, could you go back to the previous slide?
Of course.
So if we're adding $10 million worth of debt and bond payments in 2020, can you explain why the rate doesn't change? Or how it actually goes a little bit lower?
Well, the rate goes lower because the assessed valuation goes up, but the debt payments on this is, are structured for the two issues, so that in 2016, the principal is lowered to accommodate bringing in the 2019 bonds and having debt service begin on those, so that the impact to the taxpayer will be level over time.
Right, they, they call it leveled debt. So that the taxpayers are paying about the same for the entire 20 years, even though we're issuing two series of bonds, three years apart from each other. So even though we're issuing new bonds, the, the taxpayers won't see a doubling of the, of the payment.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Okay, I declare the public hearing open for proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized tax-supported estimated expenses for the year 2020.
Mayor, no, nobody else signed up, or nobody signed up?
Anybody wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to be heard on the proposed tax levy necessary to meet authorized tax-supported estimated expenses for 2020? Anybody wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Are there any more questions tonight?
Any more questions from anyone? Don't believe so. Now, Councilmember Curtis.
I wanted the public to have a chance to speak first. I'll just say I'm a little conflicted over this one. On the one side, I'm thinking, you know, overall, we, we could use the funds, I think we'll use them wisely. I'm concerned about using bank capacity at the three percent level a couple of years in a row, because eventually if we keep relying on, on that to solve our financial issues, we're going to go to zero. There will be no bank capacity, so that's one concern. And also, my preference, before we use that bank capacity, I'd like to see the, the work we're doing on financial sustainability, to say what, what's really the recommendation once we have all, all the information we can, instead of saying, "Take the three percent now," it just feels like to me we should finish that project before we make a decision. And I know, timing-wise, we need to make the decision earlier. So those would be a couple of points why I'm sort of lean toward the one percent rather than three percent. But on the other hand, the effect to a taxpayer is so little, it sounds like it's $13 more whether we do one percent or three percent. So I'm not sure it makes that much, causes the citizens very much pain for the benefit we're going to get. So I'll just be honest, I'm, I'm sort of struggling with this.
Understand.
Councilmember Smith?
Just so I'm clear, though, didn't we, when we approved our biennial budget last year, now, I did not support the tax increase, but I believe the council did, and so it's already, we have a budget based on that tax increase, if I'm not mistaken.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So I guess, help me understand this, because we have an obligation to complete our budget that has to be balanced by the end of the year. If we wait for this sustainability committee to give some thoughts, we will admit our obligation to pass the budget, correct?
Well, I believe that the sustainability project will inform us going forward, but will not be completed in time to
Right.
make our decisions for 2020. We'll still have bank capacity, and it will just be one of the many factors that will be recognized as abilities to provide revenue to the city or along with expenditure reductions. But we did build the budget base and balanced it using a three percent increase factor in 2019 and 2020.
Right.
And it doesn't commit us to do that going forward.
And council voted on that three percent both years?
Yes.
Both years last year, so.
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
I would just comment that I'd sort of forgotten about that, that our budget was built with a three percent in mind, so maybe that adds more on that side of the equation. So, but I, I will, like I say, I'm still struggling with kind of the whole, whole concept.
And one, one of the measures that we took in balancing the budget and providing for the three percent levy is we were able to, to create about $400,000 in savings in the budget. We went and found a number of expenditure reductions that then we put towards street maintenance. So that was one of the factors that went into balancing the budget and providing the acceptability of the three percent increase and providing additional funds for the road maintenance. So we did find some, some efficiencies that would also compensate for balancing the budget.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Smith?
Just one thought, since the new construction did come in higher, I mean, there could be some offset if we wanted to not increase the full three percent, because clearly you could probably take one or two percent off, and it would probably be pretty close to what the delta is on, on the new construction additional.
It probably would be, because it is higher than we budgeted.
Just, I'm not necessarily advocating, but to your point.
All right, any other questions? So then the hearing is closed, so let's move to the next item.
Thank you.
Temporary use permit for indoor storage for a one-year period at real property located at 15036 70th Avenue Northeast, Kenmore, Washington, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zoning, public semi-public, subject to conditions. Ms. Whitman? Mr. Hampson, you're not on the agenda.
Well, thank you anyway for letting me come up here and discuss this opportunity with you. Yes, my name is Brian Hampson, Development Services Director, and this is a public hearing for the temporary use permit at Station 54. But yes, we do have Tila Whitman here with us tonight, and she is our permit specialist and has a presentation for you.
Tila, let me know when you want to put that up.
You can do it right now.
Okay.
Good evening, council. Like Brian said, my name is Tila Whitman. I'm the permit specialist. So we are here today with the temporary use permit for what is known as Station 54, which is a building that had previously been owned by, or that is currently owned by the King County, or North Shore Fire Department, and has been being used as indoor storage from May 2015 until now. It has, as you can see up on the screen, there is a picture of the building as well as an aerial view on the right-hand side. Our code doesn't permit indoor storage, but can be allowed through a temporary use permit with council approval for uses of up to a year. The fire department has requested a renewal of this permit while they evaluate future use of the property. They currently have, excuse me, the conditions of the temporary use are allocated in the agenda item. There's been no change since the past approval in 2016. Staff recommends approval of the temporary use permit as it will not be material detrimental to the public welfare and is compatible with existing land uses in terms of noise and hours of operation, as well as providing adequate parking. Are there any questions before the public hearing? Are there any questions before the public hearing?
Councilmember Januski?
Is there any complaints?
No.
Councilmember Marshall?
And is it storage for a private party? Private party makes use of that?
Yeah, so the, the gentleman who leases it, his name is Michael Klebek, he has some local businesses, I believe. What's one of them?
Well, he has regional businesses that are popular, and I'm not sure exactly which ones he still owns, but we were, one time, looking at him opening a business in Kenmore, and he looked, we showed him this location for the storage. But another good thing to point out is that by this building being occupied, this is less expensive for the fire district to maintain. They have somebody inside that's maintaining, you know, the structure itself as much as possible, maintaining the outside, their mower, paying to get the lawns mowed. And so if they were, this company was to go away, the building would probably remain vacant for some time and could become dilapidated. It could be an eyesore to the, the area. Before this tenant moved in, we had issues with vandalism, so we're not hearing those and having any, any more complaints.
Any other questions? All right, I declare the public hearing open for the approval of temporary use permit for the indoor storage for a one-year period at real property located at 15036 70th Avenue Northeast in Kenmore, Washington, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zoning, and zone public semi-public, subject to conditions. Anybody wishing to be heard?
Nobody signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard on the temporary use permit for indoor storage for a one-year period at real property located at file 15036 70th Avenue Northeast, Kenmore, Washington, which is owned by the North Shore Fire District and zone public semi-public, subject to conditions? Anybody wishing to be heard? Yes, sir. Ma'am, can you please sign in after, after you speak and come up to the podium? And all we need is your name and which city you're from.
My name is Bonnie Dornfeld, and I live at 7332 Northeast 150th, just up the hill from this location. We moved in a few years ago, and we've been wondering for years that this seems like a very lacking use of a pretty prime corner property. I mean, it's parking for, you know, the middle schoolers have the bus, the bus stop there, but it seems like there could be, the property could be used a lot more valuably than just for indoor storage. And, you know, the building, you know, great, yes, I picked Blackberry's there, but other than that, it's, there's not much value going on with the building, other than storage. So I don't know if, is there a limit on how long this temporary use permit can keep getting bumped for every single year? I'm not certain, but it just seems like if it keeps going and going, it's really not that valuable. I wasn't aware that there had been vandalism in the past, that was before we moved in, but it does seem like, you know, they should be looking carefully at what else they can use that property for, instead of just keeping, pushing it a year, a year, a year, and just using it for indoor storage. Seems like a waste. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dornfeld. Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. Any further questions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
I don't have a question, I just, my comment was pretty close to what citizen comment was just made, is that I hope that we can work closely with the fire department to figure out a better use within the next year, and I too would not like to see this go on and on. It seems, it is a prime corner. After the housing panel that we had, they made it a point to talk about kind of important corners and how those could be zoned to facilitate development of complete neighborhoods, where people want to walk around and have someplace to walk to. That would be a prime example of that. So I'm, I'm wondering if we might want to look at that in the next year and think about what the, the zoning should be for prime corners around, around the city, including that.
Anybody else? Ms. Hampson?
So the fire district is aware that this is a prime corner, and while they're investigating what they should do with this property, this temporary use is an option, but they are understanding that the importance of this property, they've looked at redevelop, or selling it off for redevelopment, they've looked at putting another fire station there, but no conclusion has been made yet. Before they made those final conclusions, they just wanted to kind of keep the property in a better condition than it previously was before somebody moved in. And regarding the question about how long can temporary use permits go on, it's really council's decision on what that is. We, we bring anything over 90 days to you for your consideration and decision, but, you know, we'll just bring as much information as we can, and if you need more information on what's going on on the property, we're more than happy to get that for you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I declare the public hearing, well, I've already declared it closed. Thank you very much. Next item then on the agenda is contract number 19-C2105. Oh, yeah, there is. So there's an approval leaving for temporary use permit for indoor storage for a one-year period at real property located at 15036 70th Avenue Northeast in Kenmore, Washington. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Smith?
I'm actually supportive of it, but I just wanted to ask, and it was something, I think what Brian just said, that got, triggered my brain. When we had the meeting with the fire district just a month or so ago, I know we discussed this property, didn't they mention there was a chance that they would consider like a scaled-down
Station?
Station there?
Yes, that was one of their options that they're looking at.
And did they, I don't recall, did they say a timeline on when they were thinking that, or is that, I guess, probably a lot of it depends on a lot of their discussions that they're going through right now.
I think it does. I don't think they gave us a timeline at this time.
Okay. So the only reason I bring that up is because, well, I do think it makes a lot of sense to consider it from a potential housing perspective, there's, that actually really makes sense. But I would say it would, it probably makes more sense to know that the fire district already owns it, and if they were at all going to need a place on the south end, which isn't beyond the realm of possibility, at some point that it would sure be a natural spot to have it, and it would be a lot easier to use a site that they already own than it would be to have to acquire a new one.
I think talk has been a medic unit. Some facility there for the medic unit, which is needed on that side of town. Because there would be dire consequences if the bridge ever went out. So anyway. Any other questions? All right, motion in front of us is to approve the temporary use permits. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Januski?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, now, next item on the agenda, contract number 19-C2105 with Microsoft Research to participate in a pilot project deploying air quality sensors within the city. Mr. Sawyer, our environmental services manager.
Good evening, mayor, council. Yes, so I am here to get authorization to execute a contract with Microsoft Research, and I have with me Scott Counts from Microsoft Research. He was kind enough to join me today, so if you have any questions, Scott can, can assist me in getting answers for those. And actually, while I'm talking, I don't know the protocol, Scott brought one of the sensors that I talked about in the report, is, can I share that and let you guys kind of pass that down and just see what one looks like?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks, Scott.
Just a quick comment on the sensors, they're not all pretty fall colors like that, though. But most of them will just be green.
So we have a, a really unique opportunity here with Microsoft Research. They have been working on developing these air quality sensors to basically kind of mass-produce a low-cost sensor that can be used, really, in many environments, and they are pretty fresh off the press. I think they, I mean, they're still just developing these over the summer, and they're looking for a city like Kenmore to, I don't, I don't think we can afford that if, if it breaks. Just kidding.
Actually, I think you can.
The, looking for a partnership with, with a city like Kenmore, so that they can start deploying these in, in a variety of environments, and kind of start learning about air quality patterns in urban areas like Kenmore, and seeing how different air quality parameters are distributed from, you know, roadway like 522, what happens as you go away from that. We've got a few areas around the city that might be really interesting to see how parks and open space impact air quality as, as the air moves through different types of, of land uses. And we spelled this out in the report, and if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to, to answer those, and I've got Scott here to help with that. As far as logistically, it's great for the city, since it basically doesn't cost us anything. We would just be a partner and help Scott basically kind of find areas on city-owned properties and right-of-way where we could secure these devices and let them start collecting data. Microsoft Research would directly receive the data and share that with the city, so we would have our hands on the data and we could use it however we want. Microsoft Research would also be able to get the data and conduct their research as well. So it seems like a good win-win situation for, for everyone involved, and I'll let Scott add anything if I've missed something.
No, I think that's a great summary, thanks.
Questions? Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Curtis?
Thanks for coming tonight. This is really exciting, and I'm very interested to see how it all works out. I'm curious, is there a plan at all with the data on how we will use it, or what the next step is, or does it involve the city? If you could kind of let me know or let us know on that.
Yeah, great question. Yeah, and so there was a, I worked with Don, to draft a legal contract with the data, so we have a plan in place for, like Richard said, we'll collect the data initially, and actually just goes wirelessly right from the device up into an Azure data store, and then we'll make the data available for you all to use, actually, and ideally, we just would like it to be publicly available.
Great, so does that, is, because I don't know exactly what we're going to be given, does it, does it, is there, you know, like, a guide to help you interpret what's happening and what could be happening, or what, I mean, this is so new that I don't know how to reconcile what we're getting versus how we can use it.
Right, great, great question. So there, just quickly, in terms of what the data actually will be, you know, what they are, so there's four different gas sensors in there, so CO, NO2, O3, which is ozone, and SO2, then there's a particulate matter sensor, so tiny particulates, which is actually a huge component of the pollution, and then there's temperature and humidity. So those are the actual, just sort of numbers that will come off the devices. We'll do a sample once every hour in each of the locations, so we'll have hourly data, like Richard said, at some sort of, you know, fine-grained temporal resolution, but also spatial resolution, hopefully, so that then we can start, you know, answering some of these questions about what we call kind of hyper-local air quality. So, you know, most cities have, you know, one or maybe a couple of air quality sensors, if any at all, but we'd like to start, you know, helping you all and everybody start addressing some of these questions around things, like Richard said, which is, you know, you just, you have a large roadway, so you know there's going to be some pollution there, but how does that dissipate off the roadway? You'd have to go a block, or a half a mile, or five miles before you get this sort of reduced pollution effect. So those are the types of questions that we're hoping to answer, and then these gases and the particulate matter form, that kind of the core components of, of air pollution, basically.
Right, thank you.
But I also think there's things that can be done with the data, because I'm assuming we would have access to the data, and we could have another hackathon like we had here, or get somebody to develop something that would give us hourly levels that could be compared back to previous days to sort of get some idea. Is the sulfur dioxide staying the same over time? Are there peaks? Is it actually decreasing? The same could be said for ozone or any one of the other gases, and certainly particulate matter. Are we getting more particulate matter during the rush hour, when we've got a lot of density of cars along 522 corridor? And are we seeing any lowering of those particulates during the middle of the day? And what happens in the middle of night? Is it down at its lowest level? So there's a lot of things that can be gleaned from this information to help us better address what's happening with the version of traffic. Councilmember Curtis?
So when does the pilot start and when does it end? And then I have another comment after that.
Okay, great question. I think we had in the contract, I think it was, was it six months? I keep sort of looking over at Don. We do have a defined timeline for it. I think the actual start date wasn't, so it's TBD, probably sort of first of the year would be my guess, when we'd be ready with enough devices to go. And then from there, there was a designated length of time, which I think was maybe six months, I'd have to refer back to the legal contract.
Okay, so it is just less than a year, a year or less, it sounds like?
Correct, yeah, and we could extend it, of course, if, if people wanted to do that.
And just a comment, I know we are in the Evergreen Hospital Public Hospital District, and they have a pulmonary clinic over there, and they might be interested from an asthma respiratory standpoint of sharing that data and using it.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be terrific. Like I said, we'll have both data files that I think we'll provide daily to the city, and then the city, of course, can make those available. We'll also provide an API that if the city is okay with it, we could just make publicly available, so that'd be great.
And the data is public record?
Councilmember Marshall?
Is the device capable of measuring any other data, or like, say, online, other online access? Are there other online data, or people's private uses, or any other online data?
Yeah, great question about data privacy. So the things that I mentioned before, it's the only thing it measures, so there's no, there's no camera, there's no microphone, or anything like that in there. So it just measures those four gases and the particulate matter, and then temperature and humidity, and, and that's it.
Any other, any other questions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
And I, I might have missed it, but about how many will there be, and about where will they be located?
Well, the exact number of devices, again, is a little bit TBD, we're thinking in the range of, you know, low double digits in terms of numbers, and then the exact locations would be sort of jointly determined by the city and, and us as well. Again, I think they would all be on city-owned property, roughly speaking. We're doing this in Boston as well, and what we've done so far is, you know, light posts and bus stops and things like that.
And just have a quick follow-up, I mean, it'd be great to kind of take into account the prevailing winds, it's always coming from south to north, just because that's where we get a lot of problems.
So I think there's also been requests from one of our citizens to have an event where people had these on their backs, walking around the community, and do a rough sample of air quality throughout the neighborhood, so I won't say who it was, but it was a pretty good idea. So anyway, any other questions? So you know, from when I met you first at Microsoft, I'm pretty excited about this one, and want to see it happen, so I'm excited. It's moving forward. Councilmember Curtis?
I do have another comment on the time period. It really, things do vary around here, based on time of the year. It really, things do vary around here based on time of the year. So, if you only measure six months, you may not get the whole story, because the prevailing winds change directions a bit and there are inversions at certain times of the year. And so, six months may not be enough to get all the information that's there.
Manufacturing is prevalent at certain times of the year and not at other times of the year, so.
Yeah, great point.
Anyway. All right. So, we're looking for a motion to authorize the city manager to execute agreement number 19-C2105 with Microsoft Research for our participation in a pilot project deploying air quality sensors within the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, please take the floor.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Glad to see Microsoft here. It's good to see your involvement in the community. All right. Next item on the agenda is Charter for the City Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You gave us some direction on this a few weeks ago, and so we're back with more detail on process. And you also met, I believe, when we talked about this last time, you met Tori Berzitas, our consultant on this, who's our project manager. And with that, I will turn it over to Tori to walk you through this next step.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, I will present for you the Charter for the City Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force for your review and comments. First, I will review background on the project and previous direction. Next, I will briefly discuss context, best practices, and the process we went through to draft this for you. Finally, I will review the charter and some of the highlights of it in your packet and welcome your questions. As we had mentioned previously, the October 7th special meeting, council approved a process to create a financial sustainability plan, continuing with previous direction to staff, and asked for further discussion of proposed charter for the task force that we discussed. So, that's brought back to you today for your review. A couple of things there, just for some highlights as a reminder, through the remainder of 2019 or completing Phase 1. Phase 1 is about gathering the very best data possible. You really only have one opportunity to lay out the scope of the problem and when it starts and how large it'll be for a community. So, the legitimacy of data is very important to this project, so that's what we're doing first. We'll be bringing that all to you at your council retreat in January and getting further direction. What we're beginning to preview tonight with the discussion of the task force and any activity in Phase 2 is really a discussion of how we then have a conversation about what we have determined the nature of the problem is. So, the task, we're looking a little bit ahead in the process, but certainly this is a great time to do that. The only due date that we're working around for this project is June, and that's because you begin your discussions on the 2021-2022 budget at that time. So, whatever size of question you would like the community to take on between now and June is up to you, but that is the time in which you begin the process that we can't change the timeline on that. Couple of notes on task forces. As we had noted at your last meeting, you know, we definitely heard your comments that a task force is a great opportunity. It also poses some challenges, and you had an interest in hearing more about how this could be done well. Some things for consideration, some practices and community engagement that we drew from for this draft were deliberative democracy. There's some great work done, being done at Colorado State University on this. And they do a lot of work on what they call wicked problems. And I would call financial sustainability in Washington cities a wicked problem. These are problems that don't have an easy answer. They're problems that don't lend themselves well to looking at them in a binary fashion. You know, the answer is this or that. There's really a multitude of answers, and often the answers are found in an expression of values. So, there's not really a right answer for some wicked problems. It's more about what is important to the community and then how that is expressed through a solution. So, the process of deliberative democracy is about understanding that when it is a wicked problem, you have tough decisions and tough choices and tough problems, but it's just understanding that whatever decision or combinations of decisions, each one of them has consequences. None of them are easy. So, it's a process of examining all that and having an honest, difficult conversation with the community about something that's hard. So, that's where venues like a task force can be helpful in helping process that. Some other places we drew from were the Bleeker Method about the importance of legitimacy of data, so thinking about how to make sure that we are doing our very best job to bring you and the community the best information possible and communicating well. And then also the IAP2 Spectrum, the International Association of Public Participation. So, thinking about ways to do this well. In addition, there was a close review of other charters in this area. Other cities have chartered advisory committees or task forces. Two that were notable were City of Mercer Island and City of Shoreline. This one is closer to the City of Shoreline's charter, which I have a copy of and could share for those who are interested. The City of Shoreline took a very open-ended approach to examine the problem and look at it from all sides and not guess what the answer might be, because as I said, wicked problems don't really have an answer. And then also in conformance with the criteria for success that you approved for the entire process at the October 7th meeting. So, if you look back at that, you'll see that what we've proposed here is a way of getting to that result for you. So, the charter in front of you serves a couple of different purposes. Charters generally will define a purpose of a group to make sure that they have clear direction as to what it is that you're looking for them to do, gives them a clear goal to accomplish with a timeline, and explains membership and selection criteria clearly from the beginning. In this case, this charter had a particular challenge in that we needed to define a clear role for this task force, which would add value to all and be complementary to the roles of others. And I mention that because as people, if you just say the word "task force," everybody has a different idea what that means. But what I'd like you to think of is all the other groups in this process and what their role is, and then how we've created the task force backwards from that. So, the role that is most important for those of us who work in local government is that the council is the decision-maker. So, this task force is designed to emphasize that they are not the decision-maker. This is brief and focused advisory work in nature. The council is the decision-maker. And that is to say that the council will take input from this task force, from the public, from community groups, from its other advisory committees, and you will make the final decision, because you are the only people who are elected by the people of Kenmore. So, I want to explain that I heard your focus on that from the last meeting, and that is expressed through this. The second group, because the city spends public resources on it, is staff. So, that is to say, it is the staff's responsibility to serve this committee well and to serve you well. So, again, the task force is not to duplicate any of these roles. So, if the task force led too far into decision-making, that would be problematic. If it led too far into trying to do work instead of staff, that would also be challenging in that you are spending public resources to have staff who will help you. So, if you have concerns that, about the nature of staff presentation, that would be something that goes to the city manager, but the task force is created to not overlap with that role either. So, that's how it's proposed. The third, then, is the public. As you all know, the org chart for cities has the public at the top. And that is to say, the role of the council is the decision-maker, and the public as the people weighing in and advising how you should make your decisions, that is the reason that the draft does not include public input at the task force, in that our proposal was not to have confusion as to who is the decision-maker. So, obviously, I'm here to receive your input and make any kind of changes that you'd like to see, but that's why, because providing comment is something that is done for policy advocacy purposes, and that proposal was simply to clarify who the decision-maker is for policy. So, that can be changed, but that's why. So, some of the recommendations in there, as I had mentioned, the most important thing is to clarify who the decision-maker is in this process in reflection of your feedback at the October 7th meeting. And in fact, I was reviewing the comments in preparation for this from the last meeting, and somebody had referred to it as a long-term focus group. That may be a better way to think of this. We don't want to overburden citizens with having to learn everything from scratch, because you have staff. They should not have to relearn everything from scratch, but we also want to honor their time and commitment. So, it's to get their thoughts and to get their recommendations, but again, brief advisory and focused in nature. Second, the charter clarifies membership. So, the criteria for membership that is proposed is anyone over age 16. That was in case a youth decided to apply. And then that would be somebody who's a resident of the City of Kenmore or owners or employees of businesses physically located in Kenmore, so it's open to both. Two spots are preferred for community members with experience in finance, business, or management, in reflection of the interest in having people who have gone through similar processes before on the task force. Third, the group is restricted on time, so you'll notice the scope of work in front of them is fairly prescribed, and that is because they only have a couple of months to work. So, if Shoreline's very first effort on this many years ago, when they were just starting out, before anybody else had done it, the task force took 18 months. We don't have 18 months until you have to start the next budget, so this is designed to fit into that instead. But that has been the experience of some other places before cities really began to pioneer best practices in this. As I had mentioned, the suggested role of public input was simply to emphasize who the decision-maker is. That can be changed, but that was, I believe there is important, it is important to clarify that the council is, are the people who will make decisions on policy here. Again, the crucial importance of the legitimacy of data, that is what we are doing for the rest of 2019, is double-checking every number, getting independent verification of all the financial forecasts to make sure that those are in the best shape that they can be, and completing the community survey. Finally, updating the party-based budgeting programs to make sure that everything is in alignment to begin the conversation then in January. And then finally, the role of this task force is to create a report to the city manager by May 15th, 2020. The role of the staff is to support the committee in whatever their questions, ideas, alternatives, and facilitating that fresh look at things and getting their opinions. The role of the city, then, is really providing space for this conversation. As I had mentioned, with wicked problems, there really isn't an easy answer to some of these. It really, my experience is it's not as binary as we wish it would be sometimes. So, this is the proposal in front of you, and that concludes my remarks.
Questions? Councilmember Marshall.
How do you think you could fit in public comment at the meetings if we saw directed?
Yeah, you certainly could. There could be a point during the meeting where public comment could be had.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, along those lines, I think it, I mean, I understood that this was part of the public engagement process, and I think that could be punched up a little more clearly in the document. It kind of looks like it stands alone, and I think that caused a little bit of confusion to folks. And then the other piece, and I know this was in this, in an earlier version, I think, that we saw, or at least part of it, but tell me again the rationale for the report going to the city manager as opposed to directly to the council?
Sure. So, the rationale there was to emphasize the advisory role of the report. I will say that, as we had proposed in the criteria for success, the agendas for this will be public, the meeting will be public. If you decide you'd like public input, we'll certainly add that and record it. So, the report would also be public. It really goes to everyone. The only structure, the only piece of the structure in which it's going to the city manager is to emphasize that we are all working together to advise you on what should be done.
I just have a slight follow-up on that. I mean, it is a little different than, for example, our planning commission process, although I understand that's a commission and not a time-limited task force. I mean, it is a different body, but I'm just not sure the functionality of the extra step, if we're releasing it all at the same time, and, yeah.
Councilmember Danuski.
I would like to see public comment added, and I actually really like that the report is going to the city manager instead of the council. I think that really shows the task force that they are advisory and they're just a piece of the puzzle, and they're not expecting us to approve their report or anything like a planning commission docket. So, I actually, I actually really like that it's going to the city manager.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, our planning commission is advisory by and large also, and they take public comment. I don't see, I don't think that muddies the issue with what the planning commission's kind of role is. So, I would have no, in fact, I think it'd probably be good to add in a little bit of public comment. If we're worried about time, you know, I've seen some meetings where they say, you know, we're going to cap it at 20 minutes, and then they cut up, and they divvy how much time they're giving each person based on how many people sign in or something like that, if we're concerned about task force time usage. But I think making sure that there's a place at that level for the public to plug in is important. And I think I just heard you say this, but I want to make sure that I did hear you say this. So, these meetings, are we planning on having them here and having them streamed online like we do with our council meetings and planning question meetings?
Oh, I hadn't thought about streaming them on. I guess we could. I'd look to the city clerk. Is that pretty easy to do? So, okay.
Okay. I mean, I just think making this as transparent as possible for folks who are, you know, at home cooking dinner, if they're so interested, to tune in and listen to talk about financial sustainability while they're cooking dinner, you know, we should, that opportunity should be available to them.
So, Kelly, I won't be expecting you to come to them, but it's pretty easy for me to flip on the switch and hit the record button?
We'll just need to make sure that everybody's set up near a microphone so that you can actually hear versus just an informal committee around a table, so, otherwise it'll be hard to hear. But yes, it is easy.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I would also agree. I think they, having a little bit of public comment somewhere in there is kind of, I think, an important part. It just adds to what was sort of the intent of, which is to involve the community in this aspect of it. And I'm also very comfortable with the fact that this is just an advisory. I mean, even in the mission statement, in the second paragraph, it says to provide additional community perspective on the issue. And to me, that's exactly what I think the intent is, and I'm comfortable with what it is. And I don't think any council member doesn't preclude anybody from doing additional work on their own to get additional information, and I think it's just another, you know, another part of information that's important. And it's, I also think it's important to have perspectives that are outside of the group of the body up here.
City Manager.
And Councilmember Shrubnik said this, but I want to reiterate it, that this task force is just a piece of the overall public engagement process. In fact, in, at your October 7th council meeting, the agenda bill reads as follows. This phase, meaning the phase, the Phase 2, which is part of the task force and all their work, this phase will include public communications and public engagement activities. These activities will include information posted on websites, newsletter articles, social media posts, dissemination of information through partner organizations, updates at city council meetings, public meetings, and others. So, it's definitely just a piece of the overall information and engagement puzzle.
Councilmember Curtis.
So, I'm also in favor of adding the public comment. I think if we figured council, it takes usually less than 15 minutes, I would expect this would be even less than that. So, I don't think it would take a lot of time from each individual meeting, and I think it's good input. Some people may have some real expertise that they may actually add.
Shrubnik.
I have a follow-up, and I wasn't remembering the exact language that you just read. Mr. Carl Lindsay, city manager. And it was that, what you just read was all One Direction, information going out to the public. And my recollection is there were actual events where people would have input. If there are none, then we definitely need public input, but...
The last part I read was city council meetings and public meetings. So, the public meetings would be that opportunity.
Okay. Yeah. And I, I'm torn about whether those are the right place for, whether the task force is the right place for public comment or whether those are, or whether it's just a free-for-all for both. And I guess I, because I want to make sure we're hearing the public in the optimum way, I guess. So, I don't know if that's... So I don't know if that's a both-and, and maybe it is. So, yeah.
So I think it can be whatever you're comfortable with. That is, some of the concern is the more venues through which you get public comment, the more chance there can be for either getting duplicates if people are very motivated or missing something. However it comes in, I will be working very hard to record all of it, and everything goes to you. So everything from all the public meetings, the city manager is right, that is a small piece of that phrase, but I see it as the bulk of the work. The communications is to tell people that we're doing it and to share the information, but the community engagement is really the core of what we're doing in the spring. So however you're comfortable receiving that, we will record all of it and bring it to you.
Any other questions? Any other? So, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Charter for Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force.
Do we want it amended to add public comment?
Amended to add public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. To approve a charter for City Financial Sustainability Task Force with a public comment. Any further discussion? Hearing that, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Staff Report, an update on city management aquatic weeds in Lake Washington and Smamish River. Mr. Sawyer.
I'd like to provide an update on the city's aquatic weed management plan that's been in effect since about 2017. I don't believe there's been an update since the first treatment when the Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan was wrapped up that first year. So since then, well, let me take a step back. So in 2016, 2017, with Department Ecology Grant and... All right. So with the Ecology Grant and we worked with the consultant Herrera Environmental, we produced an Integrated Aquatic Vegetation Management Plan and conducted our first treatment for aquatic weeds in 2016. And in the plan, really what it comes down to is a way for the city to manage the aquatic weeds and plant growth in the Smamish River along our park waterfronts, and then we also own into the lake Logwood Park and then down along Inglewood Wetlands, which is just south of the Smamish River along the lakefront there. And in the, in development of the plan, they went out and they did several surveys and collected data on what was growing out there, and identified three target weeds, including the Fragrant Water Lily, Watermill Foil, and Brazilian Agaria, and kind of developed a treatment plan to start enacting over the next couple of years, targeting these specific weeds. And we have done so. So in 2018 and 2019, we have conducted herbicide treatments in those areas identified in the report, areas one, two, three, and four. And they have been, I think in 2018, visually they were pretty successful. I remember going out to Squire's Landing, and you could see the river was clear, actually saw some fish going by. It was very nice. And in nineteen, the, the target weeds were successfully treated, but the applicator that we had hired for in nineteen was, the feedback he was providing the city was that these target weeds were not necessarily the abundant weed out there that was causing impairments, particularly for recreational use. And we really needed to kind of step back and take a look at the plan again to figure out if what, you know, are we most effectively treating what needs to be treated? Are we treating it in the most effective way? The, and the nineteen treatment in particular, the Mill Foil and the Agaria was pretty spotty in those areas. And so while the treatments, you could say the treatments were effective, it was basically kind of overkill, so, you know, I'd like to look at, it is an annual frequency, really, what we need to continue doing, the other emerging plants that the applicator noted. I'd like to work with, go back to the consultant and have him review the data that was collected in the eighteen nineteen treatments and see if a new method or maybe a more efficient way of targeting these other plants might be warranted. The Water Lily was really the dominant one in nineteen that was still out there impairing recreational access in particular. But, you know, it's kind of interesting because he says you start treating the Water Lily and what you can do after a couple of years of the proper treatment, but then there's other plants that would emerge in its place, so you start kind of thinking, what's the, which weed do you want to be out there dealing with? And then he's noted a number of native weeds that are starting to emerge in some of these areas, so. In a nutshell, over this winter and spring, before we put a contract out for a new applicator, we'd like to sit down with Herrera again, and some of the bullets I've noted on the last page of the report would be exactly as I've said, to kind of assess and reprioritize these target weeds, if that's really what we're seeing out there in abundance still. Reassess the timing and the frequency. You know, I've spoken with some Arrowhead residents, and we've been treating in May, June, and then doing a second treatment in the second half of July. And, you know, I've gotten some feedback that those have been effective for a short term, but then come fall, they really kind of come back really hard, so perhaps kind of adjusting our frequency and timing of treatments and the treatment types would be more effective. The, I'd like to look at some alternatives. I think during the citizen comment, yes, there are, there's mechanical ways of removing weeds. I know that once you have established some control over those target weeds that you're trying to get control over, you may be able to go and do mechanical hand removal, raking, other types of things. So perhaps kind of more, more spot treatments in front of our parks, that might be a better mechanism to go out there and control the weeds. So I'd like to look into those techniques as well. And, and like I said, in the IVAMP, the plan that we produced in 2016, seventeen, I think, you know, it's time to come back and do that reevaluation. And in the plan, we even say that after a couple of years of doing these treatments, we should come back and take a look to see how effective those are. I've got data from the applicators that kind of show the location and density of these weeds before they treat, they go back out afterwards, and they collect some more information on the density and locations, so we can go back down and sit down and see how effective they are, where they're moving around, and then they do sample, they sample the species of weeds out there, so we can see what we're, what's growing out there now, and is it the same as what we were seeing in 2016, seventeen? So that evaluation would happen, like I said, winter, spring, and then we likely would be coming back to get a contract approved for the actual application of how we decide the best way to move forward, be herbicide treatments, maybe a combination of spot herbicide treatments mixed with other types of mechanical or biological treatments. And that is all I have for you in regards to the update.
Questions? Councilmember Shrubnik.
Three questions. The first question is, is the, not the financial work group, but the, the IVAMP task force going to be reviewing the work here and the recommendations going forward, so that's question one. Question two is, do we have any information from surrounding areas? For example, Renton with Jean Coulon, any municipalities around Lake Smamish, although maybe that's maintained by the county, I can't remember, around what they do? Because, I mean, what we're experiencing here is not unique, and with more warm days, of course, there's even more weeds than there used to be five, ten years ago. So we're not alone in this, and it'd be good to kind of be in line with best practices around the region. And the last question is gone. But I do want to stress that if there is a way to have non-herbicide ways to manage this, I think that'd be optimum, and it'd be nice to know what the cost, the relative cost is to using other means.
Any other questions? Councilmember Marshall.
Did you want me to address those questions?
Yeah, please.
So your first question regarding task force, I would say yes, I think it's critical to have public input, particularly so that we can get feedback from the folks living on the water and using the water. Usually my conversations with them is the best way of getting information about what they're seeing out there and dealing with. As far as resources of other cities, certainly, there are programs going on, other lakes and rivers, and I know of a few and can reach out and use them as a resource. And then the consultant like Herrera, obviously, they're working with many of those other, other folks and have contacts with a lot of people. And yeah, cost would be something that I'd want to revisit. I know in the original report, the herbicide was, just because of the magnitude of what they were seeing out there and getting a handle on some of these, that was really the most cost-effective way of getting on top of the weed control. But the, kind of what the report indicates and what kind of makes sense is that once you do get a control and handle on some things, that these other methods might be good, more like housekeeping, getting in there, and, and maybe applying some of these other methods. As well as, I think, some advantages, I'm not sure if they looked at, were the timing too, because, as I mentioned in the report, some of these herbicides are restricted to timing windows that might not necessarily make sense in regards to when the weeds are growing and where they're growing, and when people want to be out there and using the water. So, so cost can, you know, it's obviously an important factor, but also the timing and, and getting to them at the right time is, is important.
Councilmember Marshall.
Are any of the herbicides related to Roundup?
I am not an expert on those. I know that there was a list suggested, but I don't believe, that's the one that uses glyphosate. We actually used the Triclopiere, the Diquat, and then in one of the treatments, sorry, going back here, the Amazapir, but I don't believe we've used glyphosate, even though the, the report did say that was a useful one.
Okay. And then mainly, we've been cleaning up around Logwood Park, the Smamish Slough, and Inglewood Wetlands, but we also have been applying these in front of lakefront homes down the lake towards Arrowhead Point? Or no?
So when the plan was initiated, the, actually, the herbicide applicator that we utilized at the time got the aquatic plant and algae management permit from Ecology on our behalf. After that first treatment, the city actually acquired that permit, so we control it now, which allows us to use basically any licensed applicator that we want in Washington. So we use the applicator just in those areas indicated on the map, that area's one, two, three, and four. However, the permit does cover those other areas, so the applicator through kind of the permission of the city can utilize, apply the herbicides in those other areas, but that would be kind of overseen by the city, but that would be a contract between the private property owners and the applicator. So I believe that there have been some private contracts that have, that have occurred between other property owners.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I want to reiterate what some of my colleagues are saying. I think that, I think we should be taking a hard look at moving away from the more toxic herbicides and trying to find the least toxic or least invasive ways to, to deal with this issue. It is important that we have a healthy river for our fish and that we do deal with invasives, but I think we should do it with as, in as thoughtful a manner as we can. And so if we could, as we're proceeding with this, if we could really push that issue with our consultant, try to find out what other ways we could be looking at this, what other, if there's less toxic herbicides we could be using, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and I've actually learned quite a bit as I've taken over this program. And I don't think any of them will try and convince, I mean, they are out there and they do harm plants and kill plants, but as I've learned quite a bit and worked with some of these applicators, I mean, they are very intelligent and thoughtful folks that, that we've worked with. And, you know, these chemicals used appropriately at the right time and the right doses, some of those toxicity fears, because for me, I kind of was shocked when I started as well, but as I've learned a little bit more about them, I've come to respect it a little bit more, so there's not just kind of just going out there and just blindly throwing this stuff around. They usually have very short half-lives. I think most of these chemicals, the longest advisory is 24 hours, some of them you can be swimming in the water the same day, so. But, you know, they all have very specific issues that we post everywhere publicly, and they're known, and when applied in the right way, it minimizes those impacts.
All right, but when we're, you know, I mean, one of the places where, that's on the map here is Area One, which has that lagoon, which has, you know, turtles and things like that. You know, the turtles aren't going to stop swimming because we put advisory out, right? So, you know, what we are doing is affecting wildlife, even if the salmon aren't running, there's other things that are living there that, that are getting exposed. So, you know, if we could be a little bit more aggressive with finding less toxic ways to approach it, I'd appreciate if we could do some digging in that direction.
Mr. Sawyer, how many different state agencies are involved in the permitting process before we can apply any herbicides of any type? And who approves those herbicides?
So our permit with is, is just with Department of Ecology, but the, I believe the applicators have to, in addition to Ecology, they have to get their license through Department of Agriculture.
So no herbicide can be used unless Ecology approves of it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, Richard, I, I think you sort of touched on it with, with Councilmember Marshall's comments, but I am curious, with the private property owners, and you, it even says on your, your agenda bill, it says private property owners have had various areas along the shoreline treated. Do we give them guidance in what to use, or do we just, is it just assumed that if it's a legal product, it's fine to use it however you, however it's instructed to use? Or how does that, or how, I mean, I'm just curious what our role as the city is from the private party perspective?
So we, as long as they're following all of the rules outlined in Ecology's permit and satisfying Ecology's requirements, we haven't restricted anything outside of that. So we haven't applied any more stringent requirements than what Ecology does.
Okay.
Councilmember Curtis?
Do they apply it themselves, or do they have a professional apply it?
You have to be a licensed applicator through the state to apply it.
That's what I understood.
Yeah.
So I do agree with the deputy mayor that we need to look at the, for the least... So I do agree with the deputy mayor that we need to look at the, for the least harmful or least amount of side effects from any herbicide we use, but we do have this noxious weed problem that is spreading and can cause problems with the fish population on its own. So, but I think we need to be diligent in, in what we're putting in our lakeshore, so I do agree with the deputy mayor and others. Anything else? Thank you. Thank you very much for the report, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you.
All right. Comments, reports, initiatives? I keep going back the same way, but it really does work the best. Councilmember Smith?
Nothing to add, thanks.
Councilmember Marshall?
Hey, thanks for a great town hall here. It was a great turnout, wonderful issues, a wonderful experience here in Kenmore, just outstanding, I loved it.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I do have one issue. I met with Paul Conradi, who lives over on 71st Avenue Northeast, which is the little narrow street going north-south that goes into the south side of the Kenmore Elementary. And his concern was how narrow some, that, that street is, really related to where the parking is. And so as far as I could tell, he, he, we sort of talked engineering, but as best I could tell, 14 feet in his mind feels like it's pinched so much, it's a one-lane road, even though technically you could probably get two cars through 14 feet. 16 feet, he said, would work, and 18 feet's ideal. So he actually gave me a picture from, from the top of the street, the parking, and it seems like by just cutting a few feet off each of the northbound east parking and the southbound west parking, that probably 16 feet could be created between the, that pinch point. And I told him, I'm not an engineer, our city manager wasn't an engineer, and we rely on our engineers to help us on these things. But I said that, you know, as a council member, I'd be willing to at least like to request that the city do an evaluation. So, because I think we've, we feel, you know, the priority is safety. And a pinch point, you know, using parked cars does create some safety, it slows traffic down, but at a certain point it is so skinny, it is a one-lane road. So I said, I would recommend or request the city staff to look at that, but I wouldn't want to solve his problem and fix, break five other things somewhere else in the city. So I said, I would not want a, an individual solution. I would prefer something where our city staff looks at it and says, you know, pinch points below a certain level on a somewhat public road. Now, there are some things that maybe go to a cul-de-sac that I don't care, but where there's a fair amount of traffic. So, so I'd like to request the city staff, look at that issue of pinch points and how narrow they are, you know, can we avoid them becoming one-way roads? And give us some kind of a recommendation so the council can at least discuss it. So I told him, you know, engineers are experts in this, but I'd be interested in at least looking at pinch points, 14 feet, 16 feet, 18 feet, and how it could be, any rule could be applied anywhere in the city. And I know there's been discussion of making this a bigger discussion of how traffic and parking could be addressed in the whole city in a more complex and deeper level, and I'm not sure I want, I think the staff's really busy right now. I'm not asking that. I'm just looking at pretty much the, the minimal issue, pinch points, how narrow are they when they become one-way roads and is that what we really want?
You want three others?
I guess the question is, do I have anybody else interested in having the staff look at that issue?
Could you repeat what you're asking again?
So what I'd like the staff to look at is traffic calming devices. When they are a pinch point, do we, do we want pinch points to be so narrow, they actually turn it into a one-way road? So I don't have, I have no problem with pinch points, but when they're so pinched, it's really a one-way road each way? That feels very different to me than I think the intent of a pinch point, where we just slow traffic down.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about the creation of new pinch points? Because we have existing residential pinch points that do just that now, where you can only get one car through. That's how I get home, especially when I'm coming home and, you know, during rush hour, I often have to pull over, wait for the oncoming car to get through, and then I can get through, and that's in my neighborhood. So are you talking about the creation of new pinch points or do you want us to look at all pinch points citywide?
I think the answer is, I don't know what's out there now. I, I lived in Wallingford before. Every single street was a one-way street because there was parking on each side and there was no option. So clearly, some neighborhoods have, it's a major, that's, that's just how it is. So I really don't understand how big of an issue it is in Kenmore, and I don't know if that's even an easy thing to find out. If it's a common thing throughout the city, then we could just say, well, this is a common thing throughout the city and you're one of them.
Yeah, I, like in, like in my neighborhood, I don't live on this, the street where this is, but I think the neighbors would be pretty ticked off to lose their parking in order to remove that pinch point. I think parking is more important to the neighborhood than the pinch point is. So if, so to apply a citywide policy about what, how pinch, whether pinch points should exist, my neighborhood would have a problem with removing that pinch point, I think. So we, I, what I'm saying is, if you wanted to adopt policy saying you shouldn't create residential pinch points where only one car could get through, then that would, I'm pretty sure that would upset my neighbors.
And I'm not sure that's what I want. I guess I just don't feel like I have enough information to have given him an intelligent kind of an answer. As I looked at his picture here, the, the two cars that are southbound, if that was actually a busy street like 73rd, we'd be getting complaints, people say, I can't see left for, for traffic. They would feel very unsafe with that on a busy street. So it feels like eliminating a few feet of parking there could solve this problem, but I just don't want to break something somewhere else by, by looking at this one intersection. So maybe it is just see what can be done with this intersection and make sure we're not making anything worse anywhere else in the city. I just don't feel like I have enough information.
Yeah, my neighborhood has a lot of those pinch points where long stretches of the road, depending on who parks where, are, are one-lane roads, and I think my neighborhood would not like those all to go away as well. I feel like if we're going to look at this one issue, just leave it at this one issue.
My neighborhood's that way too.
And I think our neighbors, nobody's complaining about it, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I grew up in Wallingford, so I learned to drive a park in Wallingford, so I, I feel you, I, I've been there. I, I had a one-on-one, I think, with Rob and John Vicente maybe a month ago, where we were talking about this a little bit, and they'd set up traffic cameras and were watching this, this area, this pinch point. And I think you said the longest wait anybody had was maybe four or five seconds total?
Probably something like that, yeah.
I mean, I just think this one particular issue is getting to the point of micromanaging staff, and I don't think that's quite our job at council. I understand kind of where you're going, but I don't know, this seems, seems pretty small. And I'm not sure exactly what the deliverable is that, that you're, like, it sounds a little amorphous, what you're, what you're pitching, I'm not, I don't know.
Maybe so. It just felt like this problem could be solved really easy. Give 16 feet between those two parking spots and you've solved the problem. But I do want to fix that one and then say, I've, we've created some other problem somewhere else in the city. So that's what I told them, I wouldn't be willing to do a one-fix and then make it break something else. So that was my only ask, is would a fix at this intersection, 16 feet between those two cars, create any change anywhere else? Or we, that we can do that? We can solve one intersection and ignore the rest?
Anything that speeds traffic up around an elementary school, I'm wary of doing. I think the fact that it is a pinch point, that it is turned into one-way for a short period of time, I think it's great because the little kids can be able to hopefully get to school a little safer, so.
On this, Your Honor?
Yes?
On this particular issue, so far, I've only heard from two residents on it. One likes the pinch point and wants to keep it, the other one doesn't. The one that doesn't has definitely been more persistent and energetic about it, but the fact remains, I've only heard from two residents on this so far. But that said, you as a council are welcome to tell us, scoot the parking so that 16 or 18 feet is the new width, and I'd be happy to do it.
I don't think, I'd feel comfortable giving those kind of detailed, that, that does feel like micromanaging the traffic department, and I don't know enough about traffic engineering to recommend that.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Just going down the line, nothing to add then.
Zinsky?
There's a really big blue chair across the street. It's really big. It's, it's been fun. I've driven by twice and both times there were people climbing all over it. So anyway, if you haven't seen it yet, you should go see it, it's pretty fun.
Great idea. A nice memorial of you.
I'm not dead.
You're not dead, but you're leaving.
A parting gift.
Yeah, a parting gift, there you go. Deputy Mayor?
So on April 23rd, I attended the K4C semi-annual meeting down in Renton, no Mercer Island. And there were elected officials from all over King County. Executive Constantine was there, we got a presentation on deep, deep decarbonization and what else it's going to take to meet, to kind of meet what we need to be doing to turn around climate issues, and it's, it's intense. The thing that I will be bringing back to council though, is back in 2014, a K4C joint climate action kind of commitments letter was circulated when, when K4C was first founded. A lot of people signed on, but a lot of those signers have since left their respective councils and new cities have come on. And so we went through the letter and touched up a bit, updated a bit, and I think I just got a version to circulate, I want to say late last week. So I'll be circulating it around there, hoping to get councils, various councils' approvals sometime by like the end of January, give or take. So I'll probably be circulating that at the beginning of the year, maybe retreat or shortly thereafter to get people's feedback and hopefully we can jump on. It's not a required thing for us to, as a K4C member to sign on, but I think it's a pretty good letter. I think it has some good goals and some good values and I, I hope we sign on. So I'll be circulating that probably after the first of the year.
So we had Councilmember Novoski, Leo Flor, in here talking about the new public agency that they're wanting to form. We took a position, well, that's all out the window. There's a new document in front of you, and this is a striking amendment from Councilmember Jeanne Cole Wells that basically does a number of things, but most importantly, it changes the name of the committees and the steering committee would be changed to the governing committee and the name of the governing board to the implementation board. There's a change in the governing committee composition and voting. It would become three King County electeds, three Seattle electeds, and three SCA electeds with three non-voting individuals representing those with lived experience. They will have absolutely no taxing authority. Even if the state grants them taxing authority, they will not be able, they are prohibited from utilizing it. And there's annual reports that need to be done and a number of things. Anyway, I'm giving this to you guys for information because we had the other one the week before. This is the latest iteration and we will be discussing it at, at Public Issues Committee. Also, there is been a change in state law. Right now, seniors and disabled are able to get a reduction in their property taxes if they make less than $40,000 a year. With people on fixed incomes like social security or disability benefits, that's proved to be a problem in King County. And the state legislature has passed a new law that takes effect January 1st that basically says the extension will be the, the equivalent of $40,000 in the median income of a particular county. So each county will have a different minimum. Right now, the $40,000 minimum in Ken, in King County will become $58,000. So anybody making $58,000 or less is entitled to a partial reduction of property taxes. And I think it's going to be a massive education campaign because any tax increases result in a number of people having to move out of their homes because they can no longer afford the taxes. So I want to work with John Williams's office, the, the tax assessor, and, and see if we can't get some information here at City, at City Hall and perhaps have one day a month or some period of time that we have somebody from the tax assessor's office in City Hall helping residents to work through this. It will be able to be done online, it will be able to be done on your mobile phone, but I think that seniors that would be most affected of this may not have a smartphone, may not understand how to fully utilize a smartphone. So any help that we can give, I think it would be advantageous, because anything we can do to keep seniors in their homes is far better for everybody. So that's that one. Sure. Exemption. It is an exemption.
Yeah, I, I would hope that we would put something on a newsletter alerting people to the opportunities and, okay.
It'll go in the newsletter, it'll go in a number of different outlets to try to get the word out there to people.
Now, of course, as seniors are exempted, that raises the rest of our property taxes to make up for it, so let's just be clear on that. I'm in favor of it.
Yes, it does.
The money isn't disappearing.
No, it's not disappearing. All right, so last Saturday, there was a town hall here in Kenmore, Susan Del Benny and Senator Frock. The place was packed. The divider was down, it was filled, we didn't have enough chairs, we had to go out and rent chairs so we could seat people, and they were still standing. But I gotta say, you know, you go to Seattle, I know I've been to one of these town halls in Redmond, I've been to a town hall in some other cities, and they were boisterous affairs. Not here. I mean, seriously, everybody had questions, were calm, and, and nobody was hollering, nobody was carrying on. It just was a really, really great town hall that was presenting a lot of good information. So I was very pleased. Courtesy is in fact contagious in Kenmore and it still lives, so. Anyway, that was, that was good. And David Frock really was, as always, nice to hear from. So it was a great meeting, very enjoyable, very informative. So anyway, if there's nothing further to come in front of us, next meeting is the 18th and the 25th. And I think our final meeting is December 9th, if I remember correctly. So.
Maybe.
With that, we are.